Not six o'clock. Six o'clock now. Well, the meeting's ordered. The Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd. Oh, before we even officially start, I think everybody's in the right room, but because we're meeting on Tuesday because of the holiday, the City Council is meeting in committee session over next door. So if you wanted the City Council, we're not it. We're the Planning and Zoning Committee. And we've apparently locked people out already. So we're off to a great start. After locking people out, the next thing on our agenda is approving the minutes from our last time together, which was August 19th. That wasn't in our original packet, but that is a printed version in front of us this evening. Sam's got the motion. Ed's got the second. On the minutes as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Done with that. Public hearings tonight. We've got a lot of them. It's gonna be a long night. We're gonna go through them one at a time. We're gonna take small bites out of a really big apple for a while. Everything that we do tonight is gonna follow the same format. So I'll just kinda go through that right now and then that there's a structure to it. We're gonna call on our staff. They're gonna give us presentation. They're gonna tell us what we're talking about. We'll ask any clarifying questions we may have, but we're not gonna start discussing anything. We just wanna make sure we have our ducks in a row. We will hold a public hearing on everything on the agenda tonight. So once there's a presentation, once we ask our questions, we go out and hear from you one at a time. Usually, the developer comes up first, but it's not written in stone. But everybody will have an opportunity to come up once. Tell us name, address, company represent, whatever. Everybody can cycle through one time at the big podium over there. When public hearing's done, then we shut that portion down and then we start discussing up here. Eventually, somebody will make a motion to do something and we'll vote on that motion. We're an advisory committee commissioned to the City Council. So whatever we vote on, it then moves forward to the City Council and then they're the ones who take final action usually at their next meeting. Everything on the agenda, exact same format. Public hearings, 3A, the resolution to adopt the Highway 60 West master plan. And we go to our Community Development Director, Dave Wanberg.
Thank you, Chair, Commission, and members of the public. So we are asking tonight that you hold a public hearing and at the close of that, you make a recommendation related to the Trunk Highway 60 West master plan. By way of background, the city is the applicant on this. The site that we're looking at for the master plan is north and south of Trunk Highway 60 West, and it's west of Interstate Highway 35. Following just shows you the general location of where we're talking about. Again, it's just west of Highway 60 at the interchange, or 35 at the interchange of 60 and 35. So this map here shows the general study area. It's not entirely correct, but what you see in yellow is the general area that we studied as part of this master plan. I should note that the two southernmost parcels are not within the city limits, but we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail here coming up. This is part of, it comes out of really the comprehensive plan. So the Journey to 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which we adopted a number of years back, guides the area north of Highway 60 for a commercial residential mix. That's what you see in that kind of a light pink or salmon colored the top of your screen. And then in the purple area, south of Highway 60, that's really guided for commercial and industrial mix. The vast majority of this property is all zoned commercial right now. There's no changes to the zoning associated with that.
Make that noise?
No, you're good. And just to clarify what a land use plan does, the land use plan is not a zoning map. It guides broad categories of land use for things like residential, commercial, industrial use. And again, it isn't a development plan. It isn't zoning at all. The master plan that you have before you tonight is really an aspirational document that's intended to help inspire and guide future development. And likewise, the land use plan, it does not acquire land. It doesn't dictate to landowners what they can or can't do with the land, and it doesn't regulate the land use. It really is a vision for what it might be. And in this case, this land has sat for decades undeveloped. A number of years ago, the city extended municipal utilities to 38th Avenue with the intention or in anticipation of big box development happening in that area. That did not happen, and that land has sat undeveloped now for decades essentially. Now, there is some real significant renewed interest in this property from the landowners and developers who are contacting the city, saying, "We're interested in potential development out in this area, but we're seeking more guidance from the city and what that might look like." Again, the city does not develop land. We don't acquire the land, but we can help inspire or work with the property owners and developers to look at what that might look at, look like in the future. And that's what you have before you tonight. So the city EDA put as one of its top priorities, looking at gateway improvements. They've identified this Highway 60 corridor that we're talking about tonight as one of the key areas to look at. The City Council has also identified this area as a really critical area in the city to be able to develop in the future as well. The EDA then helped fund a consultant to come in, Bolton &amp; Mink, as well and as Excel Energy. They helped fund some of this as well. So we had some money set aside to be able to hire a consultant and take a look at this site in more detail. Everything from topography, some of the issues and opportunities that might be associated with that, to interviewing the major property landowners in the area and getting their feedback on what they would like to see. We've also then, they've conducted a joint work session with the Planning Commission and the City Council to discuss the master plan for this area and get some feedback from both the Planning Commission and Council. So the area vision for this is really to have an active front door into Faribault where regional economic activity and new neighborhoods are woven into the natural landscape. Some of the principles include establishing an area that is an attractive gateway and welcoming to the city, embracing the topography and other unique characteristics of this site and working with them in any kind of future development, respecting other city development that already exists in the city in terms of businesses and others, respecting that, but looking at the opportunities that may be out here, leveraging multimodal connectivity with the rest of the city, including the state trail that runs along Highway 60, and a number of other principles associated with that. As I mentioned, the consultant did a lot of detailed inventory analysis of this area. This is just a summary of some of those challenges and opportunities that are associated with this area. What you see at the top of the screen in the dark blue is Cannon River or Wells Lake. In the light blue that surrounds it, that's the shoreline overlay that the DNR controls in terms of a number of regulations that we would have to abide by. That does do things like limit the height of buildings out there, limits the density of development in the area, impervious coverage and the like. So that does have some effect on what the future land use could be. You also see running north and south, or from the top of the page down to the bottom of the page, red lines. That indicates the pipelines that run through there, which are pretty significant, and that affects development. The squiggly lines, the brown lines that you see on there are the topography. The closer those lines are together, the steeper it is. And so the area south of Trunk Highway 60 has some topography, especially right as you get close to the Trunk Highway 60 area, and that limits development. But there's also some considerable opportunities, being located as a gateway into the city and being located very close to the interchange of Highway 60 and Interstate 35. So a number of things that could be looked at. The area on the left, the map on the left, again, just shows some of the development and suitable areas. The purple areas are just, you know, again, some of those really steep areas. The yellow would be the pipelines where you're not gonna see much development. So it gives you an idea of what that area might look like. Then on the right-hand side is just suggesting that north of Trunk Highway 60 is an opportunity to have a mix of commercial and residential uses, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan right now. Guides that for a mix of those uses. And we'll go through that in more detail. Then to the areas to the south, primarily looking at commercial and industrial uses to the south. So let's just go briefly through that area north of Trunk Highway 60. What you see on the right-hand side is just a concept sketch of what might, that area might look like. So really, as you get close to the east side of that site, which is getting closer to the Interstate 35, you see a number of commercial type uses that would relate to the interstate highway. Opportunities for restaurants, people to pull off, hotels, whatever it might be. And then as you get to where number two is listed on that map that you see on the right, that's where the pipeline easements go through. To the west of that would be residential. And again, looking at a variety of residential uses, there's a very, very strong need for additional residential in the community, and specifically a variety of houses from everything from executive-type houses to multifamily to workforce, smaller-scale houses, a full range of housing opportunities. And we have had some significant interest from developers on this property to the west there for potential residential. And then to the south of that, along Trunk Highway 60 to the south, that would be primarily for commercial and residential. So again, some pretty strong interest in the properties, particularly highway commercial uses that would front Trunk Highway 60 or, and Interstate 35, and then industrial as you go further to the south. This would still respect, of course, the cemetery would remain there, so that remains in that area. But just looking at those opportunities. Now, again, I wanna make it really clear with this is that there's no acquisition of land. There's no, any attempt to tell a property owner that this is what your property has to be. This is an opportunity to have a vision for this area, get people excited, try to provide some guidance of what that might be. And then if there's interested property owners and interested developers, they would come forward with their plans for this. We would have public hearings to consider what their plans are. Generally speaking, again, what you can figure is that to the north of Trunk Highway 60 would be residential with some commercial mixed in as you get closer to the interstate highway. And south of Trunk Highway 60, it would be primarily commercial along the highways. But then, as you get further to south with interested property owners, industrial, if there's, you know, interest in that direction, with property owners to do that. So again, this is a public hearing, so we'd ask you that you open a public hearing on this, take those comments. I'm happy to respond to any questions. At the close of the public hearing, then you'll wanna make a recommendation on the draft resolution that's before you, if you feel comfortable moving that forward, and that is to recommend approval of adopting that Trunk Highway 60 West master plan. If you have any questions or comments and you, you might choose to say, "Let's hold the, continue the meeting and come back," we're happy to do that as well. But as I mentioned, there are some interested property owners and developers right now that are looking for some guidance on that, and that's why we're here. With that, Chair, I'll turn it back to you for any questions or comments you may have for me.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have questions for Dave before we open up to public hearing? Enough. We'll go out to the public, again, just one at a time. We'll hear from everybody. But then when everybody's cycled through once, then we'll shut down public hearing and we'll come back up here.
I'm Richard Giles. I live on 3049 Wells Lake Drive, up on that area that, to the north and west of the, in between the gravel pits. Concerned, I don't, there's no way we can stop progress. I understand that. But is there a way to slow the traffic down? We're gonna have more traffic again. Right now, coming across 60, when you hit those steel bins out there, it's 60 mile an hour in town. I thought it was 30 mile an hour. It's 60 mile an hour out there, really fast. And when they're coming across, if you've ever traveled Highway 60 between Macado and Faribault, you know it's not 60. It's 65 to 70. They come over the hill, there's a little bit of a rise right there, coming out of town to the west. Wells Lake Drive, you don't see those people until it's almost too late. Either, either the traffic needs to be slowed down, or we need a much longer turning. My wife almost got around, got past both sides with her blinker on. Somewhere along the line, gotta stop. The more traffic we add, the more construction we add, the more commercial we add, the more residential we add. Question, how can we control the traffic out there now even? Five years from now when this gets developed?
I have one question. Do you have a right turn lane there now for your neighborhood?
There's a turning lane there now, yes.
But you're just saying that if it were longer, it'd be safer?
That's what I would like, most of them, I think, are around 500 feet long. I'm not sure. Around 60 mile an hour. I think they're around 500 feet. If we had longer, it might help. But like I said, coming out of town, it, it turns, is that the name of the business out there? It turns 60 there. And that's another quarter mile at least to get out to the Wells Lake Drive. They're doing 60, 65, 70 before they come across. We need to get some way to slow it down, or traffic lane, turning lane quicker, whatever.
Got it. That's exactly the type of stuff that we're here to gather and get that through public input, and then that all goes forward. Thank you.
Excuse me, Chair?
Yes.
May I get your name and your address as well?
Oh, he said it at the beginning.
I've missed it.
It's Richard Giles' address?
G.I.L.E.S., if you want the correct spelling, and 3049 Wells Lake Drive.
3049. Thank you.
I'm guessing there's more?
Hi, I'm Matt Dranth. Address is 3115 Wells Lake Drive. As far as the traffic goes, I would love to see a couple of roundabouts. My neighbors might be mad at me for suggesting that, but I think that would slow down traffic. And if we're looking at developing that property, lots of traffic in and out, especially the residential end of that, Wells Lake Drive specifically, put a roundabout there, put up a lovely welcome to Faribault. Great opportunity. The other part of the development, you know, I actually am thrilled to see the progress. The commercial end of the north side of Highway 60, I would really like to see the residential extend along the lake so that we have stewards of the lake keeping the water clean. Development.
Thank you.
Chair, members of the Commission, my name's Jeff Ganderl, 1260230 and 388. And I own the property to the south, one cemetery there, and then one running to Highway 60. And we've been working with the city for some time now, when I acquired some of that for redevelopment. We're excited about this master plan, and excited about this side as well, for commercial. We are working with engineers, surveyors, and designers, hopefully with, we have a cemetery, a lot of platters, that's the way to get the city to do this. I think everybody knows KGB is a part of the community. So that whole area is basically, is gonna get all the buildings probably tore down and redeveloped into hopefully like a convenience store, motel, restaurant, a couple other commercial uses. So I was just excited to see that the city did work with, the city and Excel Energy did work with Bolton &amp; Mink to get the follow-up. So I'm excited to see what happens out there. And there definitely is.
Hi, I'm North, that's N-O-R-T, Johnson, 210 Fourth Avenue Southwest. I'm also with the Chamber of Commerce in Faribault. I wanted to just describe to you quickly, I'll take a short story here, the number one needs for the workforce in Minnesota right now: housing, daycare, and healthcare. Faribault, as you know, our apartment development has been pretty robust, especially in comparison to homeownership opportunities. The layout of this master plan right now, incorporated to the housing development, would include, could include executive housing, could include rural housing along Highway 60. If you look at the infield between Wells Lake and Highway 60, then executive homes on the lakeshore or rivershore, and own homes, rural homes along, out of trail, there's still room for probably 80 to 90 single-family dwellings. Much needed in Faribault, so the appropriation of this land for that purpose is excellent right now, and I fully support it.
Thanks, North. I don't mean to shut it down prematurely. I thought there'd be more people, but I just wanna make, I'm making eye contact with people. Okay, then we'll shut down public hearing. I just never wanna look like I'm doing it too fast. Nothing to hide here. Okay, so we're done with public hearing. Back up here to the Planning Commission for discussion. Sam? Got a motion from Sam on the resolution on the master plan as written. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Mike's got the second. Got a motion second? We all know what's in front of us. Any discussion at all?
Mr. Chair, just a reminder for all the commissioners, just make sure you have the microphone pointing at you and in front of you.
You? If no one else got anything, I'll just, I'll add, it was when, when Dave kept saying "decades," I remember sitting here somewhere in the mid-'90s when it was all commercial, big box. And then that master plan showed that. And then 15 years ago, it was like, "Well, that didn't work. Now it looks like it's gonna be housing." And then, so this is now the third Highway 60 West master plan I've seen. And it's just, it's, it's keeping up with the times, just keeping up to the reality. There is a lot that makes sense here. We had a pretty detailed presentation on this a couple of weeks ago. We saw it. We've had time to digest it. We got a motion, we've got a second. If there's not any other discussion, Art, please.
I just wanted to, since it did come up, the traffic studies will happen, but those, a lot of times will happen with, not, not just to the city, but those will be discussed. But again, sometimes they aren't up to the city. Because that is a state highway. Up to us.
We had a motion, we've got a second. If there's not anything else, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That carries. Next Tuesday, so a week from tonight?
That's correct.
So this will be in front of the City Council, a week from tonight, same time, same room. Next up on, let's give a second for, because I know the door's gonna bang.
That's all good.
Thanks, folks. 3B. 3B this evening. It's a resolution to deny variance regarding 15 Third Avenue Southwest. We now pivot in the hot seat as our city planner, Harry Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before us tonight, we do have a request by an applicant for a set of variances for 15 Third Avenue Southwest. The applicant is Corey Newby. For those that have been on the Commission for a little bit, you might be familiar with the urban flea market. We had a rezoning and a comprehensive plan amendment go through near towards the beginning of this year. The applicant's come back a little bit closer to opening up a business, wanting to ask for some variances for some site improvements before the business goes in. Just for location purposes, so, you know, we're looking at this property where the red star is on your screen, just south of Division, just north of First Street, and in between Third Ave and Second Ave. Here's an aerial of it, kinda showing just the general layout of the property. This property, for those that are unfamiliar with it, the bottom left-hand corner, the southwest corner, used to be Divine Mercy School. The top part of it used to be a church with a residence. And then in the bottom right is, or was currently a playground for that school, the aforementioned school. And so the request by the applicant is for two variances. First is for the front setback for off-street parking. The requirement is for a 10-foot setback, and the applicant's proposing a zero-foot setback, so the variance needed is 10 feet. And then the other variance is to not have any curbing where drives, landscape, islands, anything where there's parking and maneuvering occurring on a property, you need to have a concrete perimeter around the outside of that. The applicant's proposing no curbing, no new curbing as part of the project, and so the variance would be, allow no curbing. The applicant has cited a few different things, primarily the historic character of the property. The church on the property is very well-known. It's one of the three kind of big original churches for Faribault. And then the comprehensive plan has also been cited in terms of trying to provide a method for small businesses to get their start here in Faribault. The applicant did touch on a few other things like traffic flows, drainage, and disturbance from construction to the neighborhood. You know, generally, from staff's point of view, a lot of these concerns are not necessarily grounds for practical difficulties. The ordinance requirements are there as a, as a minimum that's set by City Council in order to allow any sort of development within Faribault. The applicant did recently change this property from, one, public institutional, to C2, commercial highway. And so the applicant is, is needing to meet a standard that a lot of our commercial districts need to meet. If a new business goes into an existing property, we do expect some improvements of said property. And so we work with them on trying to figure out, based off of, and not to get too technical, but a rough proportionality and a rational nexus to the, what they're trying to do, and equate that to the amount of effort or input that they need to do in order to make the property a little bit more compliant with code. This is what we've asked tons of other businesses. A lot of those situations have been before my time, I will admit, but in terms of my understanding from those that are still here, that is, that is what we have done. Talking to the city engineer, the Community Economic Development Director, who was previously a city planner, this is what we've asked. We, we don't see a situation where the comprehensive plan is supporting, where there are existing nonconformities, that the nonconformities should just continue to be, especially in the case of something where there is a change of land, of land use. And going from a school and a church to something where we're talking about commercial traffic, even if it is limited on days by that business, it doesn't necessarily mean that some other business can come into this location today and do something where it's everyday commercial traffic. And so that's, that's kinda the issue that we're running into, and we're trying to build it. And, you know, the requirements are set up so that there is a minimum threshold that needs to be met. So the, you know, kinda some of the reasons that we would have something like a parking step- setback would be to make sure that there's adequate room for landscaping in between parked cars and potentially headlights if it's late at night, and adjoining properties. And in this case, all the adjoining properties except to the south are all residential. So, you know, I definitely see a potential issue there, especially when we're talking about compatibility and nuisance to those adjoining properties. We also want to make sure that no cars are accidentally parking over onto public right-of-way. There is an existing fence on the property, but, you know, generally when we're looking at setbacks, it's to make sure that that will never be the case, that someone doesn't come and just tear down that fence, all of a sudden we have cars parking into the right-of-way. That setback is there for a reason. Kind of similar ideas with curbing. Curbing does a few other things that are a little bit more technical, like making sure that drainage is pooling into the right areas on a property, but it also makes sure that cars don't necessarily drive into landscaping, or drive over and onto, and, you know, sometimes onto, onto public sidewalk. You know, curbing does another thing where it's provided at the edge of a paved area, potentially asphalt or even concrete, and that's to kind of help things, you know, to sort of keep things from sort of buckling and turning into debris and getting sprayed everywhere else. You can kind of think of the curbing as kind of like a belt. You know, the belt kind of keeps everything onto the property, and it makes sure that, if it gets a little bit too big, if people are driving over a particular part, that all of a sudden doesn't fray and just push debris into. You know, we're running into this, this, this sort of situation in other properties, and we're just trying to avoid it here in this situation because we know, we know and we understand the context. Additionally, you know, we're, we're looking at a situation where this is a complete variance of the code with no, you know, sort of action taken by the applicant to sort of try to get to the harmony or the intent of the code. These are just straight variances. I think that there's the possibility with some good backing and some good justification for asking for variances here, but we're not really seeing that from the applicant. You know, generally, we're just seeing something that's inconsistent with the zoning criteria, and that zoning criteria is not just something that Faribault has specifically for itself, but really across the state of Minnesota. You know, here's kind of just a concept that I threw together, I think this was like 1:00 AM, trying to put this packet together. I thought, okay, you know, what if we tried to get to some of the things that the applicant needs? Fifty spaces is what they're trying to do as a part of their existing proposed plan. So this, I think is actually a bit more than fifty spaces. Some of the things that are not included here are like a, like a landscape island that you would typically do as soon as you get to twenty-five spaces or more, and every twenty-five spaces, you need a landscape island, but that's some technicalities I'm happy to work through with the applicant, but this is showing how you could meet it with a ten-foot setback. And then, you know, I think just generally based off of the other information that I previously presented, you know, providing curb, I think, just makes sense, and so this would give you ample room in order to provide that. So, staff is recommending that planning commission, or recommend denial of the variances that are before you to city council based on the findings within the draft resolution. I realize that, you know, there's potentially a lot for us to talk about here and a lot to digest, I'm more than happy to take any questions as we go through this process.
Do we have questions for Harry before we go off to public input? Sam?
So, originally, this is before my time, when the city council was funding down the road to Faribault. But when the applicant originally asked for rezoning, he was aware of the entitlements of the property?
Mr. Chair, you know, generally, I think when it comes to an applicant buying property, it's kind of up to them to kind of ask us, hey, what are the requirements for it? The case of the rezoning, the comp plan is interesting because staff originally did not recommend in favor of it. So, I think in some ways, you could say that staff didn't anticipate that this would become something. I think either way, the standards for parking lot design and landscaping and everything are standard throughout the code. We don't make it a point to go, you know, point by, point by point through the code in order to say, hey, this applies to you, this applies to you, this applies to you. We generally work with applicants, and they're working with professionals in order to do that. You know, we can, if we, if we absolutely needed to, but that's a lot of time out of my day to do that.
Art's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe that we had quite a bit of discussion on the, and we were actually pretty, we were pretty harmonious, if we hadn't been here at the time, about the parking lot with them from before, and this is going to be a variance nightmare for us, I believe, with the general property. If I recall, we had talked about this many times. Do you, do you recall us? Want to make, make sure I'm clear about this, but do you recall us talking about this?
Mr. Chair, so, you know, I'm not sure on the, on the second half of that question. I, I think really, the first half of that question is more of, yes, we did talk about a concept, in fact, it's the exact same, pretty close to the exact same site plan with just a few amendments to it.
As you're proposing?
That was used as a part of a lot of planning commission work sessions and city council work sessions, trying to figure out the zoning, the comprehensive plan questions. So we have seen this plan before, or a very similar plan to it. Unfortunately, nothing's really, really changed since then, and I think through the process, we, we saw this as a conceptual plan, that needed a little bit more ironing out, and we just haven't gotten to that point, where we're able to look at it from staff's point of view to say, okay, this is pretty close to site plan approval, but it is what the applicant has proposed, and it does show us a little bit in terms of what the applicant's asking for. It gets us pretty close, so that's why we're able to bring it forward to you today. So, yes, we've seen this plan before, I'm not sure to answer the second part of that, but we have, we have talked about all this before.
Ed's got a question.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump on her court a little bit here. I was not here at the original time, this was presented. I'll open your question also. So from understanding this, this applicant came once before the council or the board, and was told this is question number, or second time of the applicant?
Harry, the one you walked through?
That makes sense?
Harry can answer what the first actions were.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, I just want to make it very clear, you know, I, I really don't recall if we talked about variances. I know that there was, there's a report that the applicant has cited where, you know, I was looking at a concept plan where, okay, you know, what if we tried to accommodate the most amount of parking on-site while still providing some amount of buffering with adjacent properties? I think I was looking at maybe like a five-foot setback instead, to try to accommodate enough room so that the applicant could have, on the applicant's busiest days, the number of parking needed, or not even needed, just some amount of parking on-site in order to encapsulate the potential, I think, applicant can, once he comes up for a public hearing, can, can correct me, but I think it was like fifty people or like three hundred people an hour, it was, it was, it was a very high number of people. And so, that's, that's what I was responding to as a part of these work sessions. There was no, there was no discussion that I remember about, hey, would the planning commission support or not support variances? I don't believe that that question ever came up at council. This was more of just like, what if, what if we had to do this in order to accommodate parking on-site?
So it's somewhat of a revision of the original to some degree.
It was, it was just a conceptual diagram of staff saying, okay, you know, what if, what if we had to do this? You know, what would that look like? And still try to get to the spirit and intent of the ordinance. You know, we did, as a part of several work sessions, I think it ended up being three, and one city council work session before the applicant submitted for rezoning and comprehensive plan, uh, plan amendment, to talk about what could happen with this site. Some of that was just based off of, we were unsure, especially from staff's point of view, okay, is this something that is going to be supported or not? We wanted to give the applicant some time in order to work through that with both planning commission and city council. Ultimately, the applicant was able to work through some of those things with, with, with both. Planning commission did recommend denial of the request, and to actually suggest a lower, like a, like a C1 zoning district here, that's a neighborhood commercial, but city council decided to move forward with C2. But that's, that's kind of the history there, in a bit of a nutshell.
Thank you, Harry, and Mike's got a question.
When you do these plans, a lot of times it's much easier to depict what's going on if you have a professional drawing done, and you can see all the nuances that are missing. Seems like we're still at this PDF stage. That means we don't really know what we're looking at. I think it's important that we have a professional civil engineer draw this site up, and they can usually play around with spaces, create things that work better, but we can't tell you because we're still doing PDFs. But it's really important to get a, a really good professional drawing done, see what's really there.
Was there a question there?
No, I'm just trying to say that we can't really make it, it's tough for me to make a decision what has been given.
Okay.
Without having a professional drawing.
I just didn't want to stand on it. Okay. Any other questions? I guess the one thing that, and I just, to clarify in my head, the action that we took, and Harry said it right at the end of what you were talking about, was we had a rezoning and a comp plan amendment. That was the action we took. We didn't really go in, then maybe that gets to your question. We didn't go into site plans or anything, it was a comp plan amendment and a zoning amendment. That's the action we took.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're done with questions. Public hearing, public input, same process as last time.
Corey Newby, 15 Third Avenue Southwest, time tonight. Oh, we did, in one of the, we had to discuss. Had two variances there. I changed the variance to no setbacks. I'm requesting it. First off, it's already there, already sent in, and yes, I could get away with fifty spots with the setbacks. But that, I'm required to have four to six off-street parking spots for the first floor of the school. So I saw twenty thousand plus square feet that I'm eventually going to use, in order for me to hit those off-street parking spots. I'm going to need as much as I can. With some of the fears of having no setbacks. There's already been no setbacks for seven years, and having that would be one of the other big things that we're not able to do. I made sense, I got an email speaking once we put. Curbs in. As for the professional aspect of it, I did just recently get my survey back from John T. Smith, which shows all the pitch points and all the draft. It did a good job, and we saw that by the end of the year, it's all built perfectly. Again, I did, we 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 did. As for the aspects of being around all the neighbors, at all my city council meetings and everything, I've gone through three work sessions, five meetings, hearings now, this will be number six. The neighbors have always been there and supportive, and if anybody follows any of the posts on social media that have been brought up, the community is supportive, the community wants this, they're already going to be mad when I have to put up a solid fence around there to block their view. But I didn't ask for variance for the fencing, because I want to make sure you guys know that there won't be any bumpers hanging out into the right-of-way, there won't be stuff going out into the street, because unfortunately, there's going to have to be a solid fence there to keep that from happening. And again, to tear up ten-foot setbacks that have been there for seventy years now, to have to file for this variance in the future, to utilize the rest of the property, or ask for any of the rest parking spots, I don't know that there's likely to get past that. I always stood my ground on the comprehensive plan myself. I did take a risk when I bought the property. I saw the property, fell in love with the property, went on Faribault site, fell in love with Division 2040, and these guys will tell you, I, 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 I love that plan. I thought I had a home run, talked about getting creative, getting adaptive, where they asked me to go west, how do you save these pieces of property? That property is going to be drafted, it's fixed up, and so I'm already ready to have that. I mean, that entire property needs to be renovated, otherwise the first half of the tour to Faribault is going to be a disaster. And I can't do that if I can't get the off-street parking. It sounds drastic, saying zero feet step back. But then, I would, you can just do that, the community behind it, I can get some science from all the neighbors if needed. I feel that this is just the right thing to do, and going to need it to utilize the rest of the property. And that's why we got a rezoned commercial too. The house is nineteen ten, six thousand square feet. It's beautiful, if you've ever driven past it, that needs to be fixed up, beautiful bed and breakfast, the church, I mean, if you've ever gone in there, nobody can argue, yes, it's probably on the most beautiful building in town. That's not going to be able to get used at all, that's the part of it. So I'm requesting it. I do have another site plan where I have the setbacks in, but then the engineers are like, why would you do that if you're going to have to request a variance in five years anyway? And then, put it all back in. So that's why I'm here, to do what I, do what the property needs, and hopefully get sure the board will get it at city council, have the community show up at city council here, and see what the community will do. That's, I really need that. As much space as possible, and with the one they showed you today, the other aspect that's not being spent about with that, is that blocks off my load and my load, which I'm required to have, that's why I'm, I'm blocking that on my load as well. There's several other aspects that play into this that need to happen. So, I don't want it to sound drastic, no setbacks, no curbing, but it's been that way for seventy years, and as much as I want to say traffic's going to go up, traffic's going to go down from what the school was having, three hundred some kids get picked up there every day. And again, that fence is there to keep people from parking in the right-of-way, it's the only reason I didn't request a variance for a fence, is so there is that protection, that's always the fallback protection.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public that wants to talk to us on this one? Okay, back up here to the planning commission for discussion. Bart?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, just to kind of fill Ed and Sam in a little bit too, one of the big discussions we had had is none of the off, on-street parking. A lot of it. We'd also, as, as the applicant had mentioned, he had talked about making the, the parking spot smaller, and we had talked about trucks coming in and how that would make it very difficult, and, and how that would encumber a lot of things. Also, I think a lot of times people forget that we're here to follow the rules, and council, we, so, this is, we talk about these things, we have to kind of remember that, and, 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 Mr.
Instead of like topography, that's really something that we feel like is accurate enough and depicts what's happening on site. It sounds like the APK now has some of that info. It'd be great to have that so that we could figure out, is drainage going to be significantly impacted by curb? But we don't have that data. So I can't, I can't tell you right now, yes or no, he's going to have to lower it or raise it. But it is a good point. It's just, none of that has been done. To any, to any level of detail, that's going to be helpful for staff to say, okay, this is a lot more and becomes a practical difficulty or closer to one if he has to regrade the entire site. But even then, I'm not sure if that's necessarily a practical difficulty. So, we just, we just don't have that data to give you a solid answer. Does that make sense?
Sam.
I think, given the fact that he says that he now has that data, maybe it would be great for him to share that with that staff, see if something more comprehensive can be done between the two parties, and I would vote to continue this until our next meeting and be able to see that. That's a motion to continue.
Continue in the next meeting. For a second for the...
My second.
Mike's got a second on that. Clear on what that motion is? A question for Harry, does that jam us up on this?
Mr. Chair, it does, but I was going to issue a 60-day...
Okay, so, I just want to make sure we don't trigger something that automatically causes all sorts of other problems. You can, you can ask for the 60-day extension.
Yeah, I can, I can just give it, just based off of trying to work. Just very quickly on the idea that it would require the APK to provide some information about what they would have to do to the site, just having a survey with topography on it might not be enough.
I don't think we can vote with what we have. So I think the APK should try to get up information to make better recommendations.
Okay.
Steve's got his hand up, and then Ed's got his hand up. And also, it gets in the gray area on, when we have a vote, a motion to continue to the next meeting, we really can't debate it. We can vote pretty fast. So I'm going to open this window a little bit and go to Steve and Ed real fast, but let's keep it that way.
All I'm asking you, we're going to continue. In my mind, curbing, you don't have to take up that much parking lot. Raise it up, I mean, when you look at parking lots, I'm seeing enough of these raised up that little set where the community is higher than...
That's your expectation?
Well, I want to see that kind of detail. There's going to be a variance, I want to see that detail.
Ed, you had your hand up.
Really quick, the information that had been requested, would that be available in two weeks?
Mr. Chair, that is a great question for the APK.
Because I heard the motion...
Yeah. I've got a motion in front of us right now, I don't want to open up that whole conversation. I got a motion. Oh, it would...
Mr. Saltbeach.
Mike already, yeah. Mike already seconded it, it's fine. Sam had the motion, Mike had the second, we're ready to vote on it, to continue this to the next meeting. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? I'm the no, am I the only no on it? So it passes 5-1? So, I mean, it still passes, but I just, I'm not going to shut anything down. But so it passes 4-2 to continue it for, to our next meeting. Okay. We're done with that. Okay. Uh, okay, so, okay, that was the variance. We're up on C now, comp plan amendment, zoning amendment. So these are two separate resolutions. At a resolution 24, comp plan amendment, and then the ordinance on the zoning map. Oh, this is the one out on the north side. Harry's got the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm just moving stuff over. Okay. So, this is a continuation, sort of in a way of what we discussed at our last work session. No, just for clarity for the audience, no decisions were made, no, nothing, nothing was decided at the last meeting. It was more of just a, just to get an idea from the APK's point of view, what could happen with this request. The request by the APK, by the city, is primarily by J&amp;J Properties, but with the addition of more properties, the city has kind of taken this over of changing the comprehensive plan designation and the zoning, the zoning designation for a few properties within the 500 and 400 blocks of 20th Street Northwest, the north side of 20th Street Northwest. It's for properties that are existing and potentially in the future residential. You can see the location here, kind of, sort of within the context. And then here's an aerial with the properties that are highlighted in yellow. The request in front of you all is for future land use designation from industrial to establish residential neighborhood. And the rezoning is a zoning change from I-2 heavy industrial to R-2 low-density residential. Here's the, here's what the change would look like for the comprehensive plan, and what the change would look like for the zoning map. So these are in the comprehensive plan colors and zoning map colors. So, for discussion, comprehensive plan, the proposed land use designation is not a permanent barrier to any future development or redevelopment of these properties. It sort of acknowledges the current land use of these properties today as primarily residential. And so, because it's kind of meeting, or we're sort of touching on these few items, we do feel like that it does meet the requirements for a land use requirement. For the rezoning, it says, it's not a significant change for the adjacent industrial uses. For industrially zoned property, whether it's a adjacent residential land use or an adjacent residential zoning district, the setbacks are still the same. You're still required to have higher setbacks than you normally would. I believe the difference is 50 feet, or if your property is a budding residential versus, I think it goes down to 15 feet. Don't quote me on that, I'm trying to remember from the top of my head. Zoning could change with future conditions. Somebody could come in later on and buy all these properties and re-designate them with the comprehensive plan and zone them as part of the zoning map. We see this really as, this is a short-term thing, potentially in order to allow some new residential development, as well as to allow the existing residential development to not run into any huge non-conformities when it comes to things like trying to sell the property, where the lender, whoever the mortgage is with, may ask, why is the property zoned industrial when you have a house there? And it's an existing house, which is a very common question that we get. Or if someone wanted to do a small addition to it, it would not tie them up from potentially being able to invest more within the property. But we do see this as something where it's fixing non-conformities, it's really responding to what's just... So we do feel like it meets the requirements for zoning map amendment. So in summary, we do feel like it meets the amendment requirements, and we are recommending in favor of both actions in front of you. The first one would be a resolution to amend the comprehensive plan, to change the zoning or the land designation to establish residential neighborhood. The second would be an ordinance in order to change the zoning map from I-2 heavy industrial to R-2, which is low-density residential.
Great. Do we have questions for Harry?
With this change, I'm looking at the overhead satellite view. You talked about these setbacks. Because now with the residential, it'd be a 50-foot setback, would this affect any of the buildings that are currently industrial-zoned area?
Mr. Chair, it's a very good question. So, any of the buildings that are currently there, that are within that 50-foot setback, whether this rezoning and comp plan amendment go through or not, they already have to ask for a variance in order to change those buildings. So this doesn't, this doesn't change the burden on those existing properties. Those buildings can remain there, as long as they are not really changed. So as soon as they start thinking about any sort of extension in addition to those buildings, where they go farther into the setback, or they have to completely reconstruct it for one reason or another, as long as it's not something where, for lack of a better term, it's knacked by God, or, you know, there's some sort of fire or some sort of calamity that takes it out, and they rebuild it within a certain amount of time, which they can do if it's a non-conforming building. You know, if they just say, well, we want to do a different building there, then they have to adhere to the 50-foot setback, and they might be asking for a...
Okay. Other questions for Harry? I know the city's the applicant, but still, we'll go out to the public. If there's anyone from the public that wants to talk to us on this one.
Hello, my name is Cody Pettapies. My residence is 1313 Golden Race Circle here in Faribault. I am here on behalf of Harley's Auto Salvage and Recycling Center. I'm the third generation of Harley's Auto Salvage. My grandfather was the one who started the business in 1952. My father Gary is currently there at the business, and he's been there basically all his life. I've been there full-time now for 18 years and going to be the next owner of this property. This is our 72nd year in business. I feel like we are one of the staple businesses here in the community. I feel like we do a good job. We run a clean operation, good operation. We employ many people within the community, and we always strive to do our best. There are a little concerns on my end. Just one of them, when we were looking at the photo, could we pull up that one photo of the industrial area? How you want to change it back over to the low residential with the purple and the yellow, please?
Hang on a second, they're working on it.
Okay. In my eyes, those colors really don't match up very well. When you start mixing low residential into a high residential area, in my eyes, it's a recipe for nothing but problems. I know I have gone through this in the past before with some of you, with developments as far as apartment complexes in that area. It did pass, and I feel like they have been good neighbors. We haven't had any issues with them, no complaints. But I feel like that's a reflection of our side and the people that were moving into that area also as well. With this, I did grow up next to the house, next to Harley's Auto Salvage there, and that is the only house that is not being proposed to be changed to a low residential at this time. And I fully understand that because I will eventually end up with this property. And at, in the near future, I would like to see our business grow and eventually try to make our facility look better with an office space or newer dismantling areas at this time. So that's always on my mind, and if we start allowing low residential to come into this area, it almost prevents us from, us allowing us to go ahead with setbacks and other variances and property lines within this area. We did own the property, well, I didn't own the property, but my family owned the property in the middle there. It would be that empty lot. And I rejected to purchase this property just because I thought it would be more difficult on my end to try to expand our business into this area in between houses, rather than, rather than come up here and ask permission to do that. So that's why I did reject that property. But as far as all the other ones, I highly disagree with mixing heavy industrial in with low residential. I highly disagree with that. It's never good for anyone on our end, and I just want to come up here and let everyone know that we've been there for 72 years, we were there first, and I just want everyone to know who is moving into that area, whether they be existing or new, that we do operate with heavy equipment. There are backup beepers. We do have people, we do have people coming in and out on a daily basis through our facility. So, yeah, that's really all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public on this one? Okay, we're back up here to the planning commission for discussion. Who wants to go? Let me be the first to go. I usually don't jump first, but we looked at this last week, and there was a discussion. I can understand both arguments. Honestly, it's some of these that are really close calls that you actually struggle with them all. There's an empty lot that would be really nice to put a house on. Nice affordable housing, I totally understand that problem of that. I also, in looking at this map, see spot zoning. And much like I said in the last one, there are just certain things I don't vote in favor of, you know, zero setback and no curbing, I'm not going to vote in favor of that. And I just don't vote in favor of spot zoning. And I've really struggled with this one, and Mr. Pettapies did a really good job to make an argument for, you know, that side of the argument. I don't think there's any bad guys here, I don't think there's any... But it really does come down to that. Spot zoning could eventually maybe jam up some industrial plans down the road, but on the other side of the coin, there's a buildable lot that's beside a couple of single-family homes already. I get it. I look forward to the wisdom from my colleagues. Yes?
I think originally I was the one who proposed a whole course of, because I was the one who was, if it's a commercial now, if it's residential now, let's make it residential. I don't necessarily think it's spot zoning, if you were doing that for future use, I would say yes, that's horrible, but we're talking about what's already existing there. To the point that the gentleman said, I'm sure it's a loud place to buy a house, but you know if you're buying a house across from the county fairgrounds and those types of things. You're going to have to be a little bit more than, you know, you're going to have to... Got a house right there? Who are going to buy it are knowing what they're getting...
Other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, let's go to Bart.
People that have to run next to one thing near the 25-foot buffer to moving it down to a 10-foot, 50-foot buffer down to a 10-foot buffer on how far the funeral or the graveyard can move into the, to the existing residential. We wouldn't be moving to the same one here, but we were talking about making, putting graveyards in the specials and then continuing their setbacks.
Al, I got it. Okay.
And so, you know, now we're running into a kind of... So I think that's something we need to take into consideration. Everybody that's lived here, they know what their comfort has been ever since they've been here in this situation. So when we were talking about the graveyard, we were even considering changing it where the graveyard could then, with neighborhood councils right there, that they can also make it bring, and then culture. That type of...
I want to go to Harry for a second, just to make sure that you're traveling that 10-foot setback.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so I kind of touched on this a little bit earlier, and I'll just touch on it again, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. But how the zoning is set up for I-2 is that it either looks at land use, the adjoining land use of that property next to it, or it looks at the zoning. So it could do either. And so, right now, that 50-foot setback applies to the existing residential home today.
So for Mr. Pettapies, is there going to be a change in that, that...
Clearly no. Not really.
We were talking about, you know, the decision that it passed, it's going to pass, there will be...
Right. If we forgot about this entire request today, everything went on as-is. And let's say, for example, we have had a developer come in, and I'm trying to show on the screen where my cursor is, come in and put a building on that property, they had to put in a 50-foot setback, even though the adjoining properties to the south were zoned I-2, because they're actually used, the land use is residential. But that 50-foot setback applied. So whether it's Mr. Pettapies's property or an undeveloped I-2 property, that 50-foot setback still applies currently. Because the land use is residential, it does not need to be R1, R2, R3, R4 residential It materially doesn't change for those adjoining properties. The burden is still there, if you want to call a setback a burden.
Good. What are the wishes of the group?
Snay.
Yeah, so there'll be two, there'll be two motions.
My first motion.
There's a second on that motion.
I'll second it.
Ed's got the second on the resolution on the comp plan. We're all clear on what that motion is? Before we vote, I have landed on a position. Mr. Pettapies convinced me. It's, at the end of the day, it's still a spot zone. But again, I certainly will not disparage anyone that votes in favor of this. I can see... Get a motion, it was a second, on the comp plan amendment. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Ed, let's do a roll call vote. I think it was 3-3, but let's just do a roll call. Harry, can you do a roll call?
Commissioner Green.
No.
Commissioner Jackson.
No.
Leo?
Aye.
Yes.
And I was a no, so it's 3-3, right? So a tie means the motion fails?
If correct.
Because it's not a majority. But if someone were to make a motion to deny the request, I'm guessing it's going to come in. I'm looking for some direction from anyone here. Again, because there's six of us, how do we move it forward? Steve, go ahead.
It's a tie, so...
So the motion fails, that's what I'm saying. So if we're okay with that, that that's how we just send this one forward, but there is no, usually we eventually take action, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, it's the responsibility of this body to make a recommendation. We'll, if we can't make a recommendation, we'll run into sort of an identity crisis, which I'm not sure how to...
Yeah, that's where I'm struggling with. Steve, go ahead.
I think we've, we've made the decision. Simply because the motion didn't pass means it failed. So, we didn't approve it.
But then I would call for another motion, because we have to take action. That's, you run into it when there's a tie. That's our problem, when there's a tie. Ed, go ahead.
May I ask a question? Folks, collectively or however, no votes, what was the... Start there as a...
So...
What you convinced me of, brought me in, even though you voted differently, putting these collectively to set back. And last week, we were going to call last week, we talked about stringing all these all together.
Yeah, and I also feel for Mr. Pettapies, and at the moment, if someone decides to buy that, it will be presented to us again at that point.
Now, I'm just, I'm hearing what Harry said. The last, the last thing we want to do is lose credibility with the city council, not I don't want to get too wrapped around the axle, but in a much bigger picture, I don't want to, lack of a better word, damage credibility or damage... I think, voted 3-3, we can't come to a conclusion that we want it. But that seems to be the only logical outcome. Because like Steve said, if, if Steve were to make a motion to go, okay, we want to deny this request, it would fail 3-3. And I'd...
With all due respect to our city council, they're going to do whatever they want to do with that, let's probably vote. So if they know that we're undecided, maybe they can take a closer look at it.
Is it fair to say that, again, we had a motion with a second, it failed 3-3, it failed on a 3-3 tie vote? And we got to move forward to the zoning map one, which I suspect to be the same. But that's kind of the end of our action item, because there's only six of us, and that's a discussion that's later on in the agenda. But I don't know, as a chair, I don't know what else I can say here right now. I'm not trying to move on, but we had a motion, we had a second, and we voted and it failed. And there's no subsequent motion that would be likely to pass. So, sort of dying in this chair, let's move on.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion that we didn't deny the request.
On the zoning map?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion to deny the request on the zoning change. There's a second on that. Steve's got a second on that. Now, it's a motion and a second to deny the zoning request. Fair point. Yeah, in this particular case, let's jump right to roll calls. I've got a motion, I just want to be sure before I call it, I've got a motion and a second that denies the zoning map amendment request. That's the motion. Roll call, vote again with Carrie.
Commissioner Green.
No.
Jackson.
Aye.
Big Leo.
Aye.
Backman.
Aye. So again, that's a 3-3 tie.
No, that was four.
No, I'm sorry. Okay. Oh, Ed switched. Okay. Thank you. Okay. No, this is why we do it this way. Okay, so the motion carries.
Harry's on a 4-2.
Thank you, Carrie.
That's it, done.
Okay. Harry, so, because we've got the other one hanging out there on a 3-3, that we approved the zoning, but not the comp plan amendment. You're vexed by that.
Mr. Chair, I would suggest so that we can bring two recommendations for the two items in front. If there is consensus on the zoning map amendment, that perhaps those that were, because the motion failed, I guess those that recommended against the comp plan amendment, that they, yeah, they make a motion in order to reconsider it, so that you could then try to make another recommendation on amendment. You're not required to, but you could.
Yeah, so, actually, we don't even need to reconsider, because the first motion failed. So, anybody can make a motion to do something, because the first motion failed. So who wants to make a motion to do something? It would be a motion, what Harry just laid out, is a motion to deny the comprehensive plan amendment.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to deny the comprehensive plan amendment.
Bart's got the motion, Steve's got the second. Considering the bowl of spaghetti we got in front of us right now, we're just going to have Carrie do a roll call. to have Carrie do a roll call.
Mr. Green.
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, and that's a four-two vote as well then? Carrie's, okay. Thank you, folks. That's going to go as it is. It's going to go in front of the city council next week, so Cory, Cody, all over again, next Tuesday night, same room. Thank you, we're done with that. Say hi to your dad that played softball with them 30 years ago. I'm glad to see he's still working. Okay, now, ordinance 24 or something to vacate a portion of the drainage and utility easement, 14th Street Northeast. Carrie.
Sorry, Ms. Chair, just trying to make sure.
We've got it in front, we've got something in front of us.
What happened to that TV? Yes, I'm blind. I'm blind, I can't see it, so.
Okay, we got something in front of us now. An ordinance vacating a portion of the drainage and utility easement. I'm very excited about this presentation. Carrie.
Chair, I'm just trying to get there. Aye. So the request in front of Plan Commission tonight is to vacate a portion of a drainage and utility easement at 34th, three, sorry, 2343, 14th Street Northeast. Yepkin is Johnson-Ryland Builders and Remodelers. The owner is Shattuck St. Mary's School. The location for the property is here, just off of 14th Street West, the Legacy Golf Course. Here's an aerial of the property. And the request is to vacate just a partial area of this larger drainage and utility easement. Here's what that easement looks like, the area that's hashed and gray is the easement area that we've vacated. Based off of the criteria within code, there are no major issues. We do feel like this meets vacation requirements. And in summary, we do support this, and so we are recommending approval of the ordinance to City Council.
Got it, thank you. Do we have questions for Harry? Any members of the public here to talk about this vacation? Okay, back up here to the planning commission, thoughts? Yes, I opened and closed public hearing. I just wanted to be sure. I didn't mean to be premature. Did anybody want to talk to us about this drainage thing? Okay.
Make a recommendation that we approve the vacation of the portion of drainage and utility easement.
So the motion to vacate, and Mike's got the second. Art's got the motion, Mike's got the second as presented. Anything from the group? All I'll add is I actually remember the legacy platting process from 1997. Nobody knew where that wall was going to go. Okay, we got a motion, we got a second, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose no? That carries. Now, we have an ordinance to approve the zoning map. Again, we're up on 14th Street.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. So the request in front of you tonight is from the City Fairbo, for, City Fairbo-owned property. First is the water treatment plant, which is at 818 8th Avenue Northwest. The second is for the wastewater treatment plant, that's at 214 14th Street Northeast. And it's a zoning map amendment for both properties. And this is just to allow existing government utilities to be under a proposed P1 or public institutional zoning district. Here are the two subject properties, sort of within context, and then here's an aerial, kind of looking at each property. I'm sorry that it's so large, but just trying to get a general idea for context. Again, the request is to change these properties from their existing zoning districts, which for the water treatment plant is R2 or low-density residential, and for the wastewater treatment plant is O for open space agricultural, to PI which is public institutional. So here's the water treatment plant, area circled in red, that'd be regarded as, in fact, I apologize, this is an error, should be rezoned as GI, public institutional. And I have a similar error on this, and I apologize, but this is the wastewater treatment plant, and it would be rezoned as public institutional. So for, in both cases, what we're looking at is that there are really no major issues. I think if we had, we went through an effort not too long ago, I think it was early 2023, where the city went through with the new public institutional zoning district. We zoned a lot of these government properties, school properties, institutional-based properties to public institutional, in an effort to make them a little bit more conforming zoning. A lot of them were under R2, a lot of them were under open space, just like these two properties were. We did intend to include all the properties that we could with that initial effort. This is one of such situations that we would look at and say, well, you know, we're not going to get them all the first time, here's us kind of adding to that list of properties that make more sense. Public institutional, public institutional allows by right the existing critical civic infrastructure that's on both of these properties. So it's going to allow their continued use, especially because they are critical infrastructure pieces well into the future, and so that could allow the city to expand them, you know, certainly within the means, within setbacks, within landscape requirements, you know, in order to provide buffer with the joint property owners. But generally, we do feel like that this is something that's, that's needed for these properties, for their continued use. But we do feel like it generally meets the requirements for zoning that amendment. So no major issues from staff's point of view. So we are recommending that, you recommend, City Council, approve these rezones.
Got it. Gosh, I, okay, questions for Harry? We still have members of the public. Anybody want to talk about the public institutional zoning? Any public input on that? We're back, okay, we're, we're done with public hearing? Oh, you're leaving? I was going to be surprised if you wanted to talk about public institutional. Okay. Just want to be clear, we're done with public hearing. Back up to the planning commission, Steve.
I agree with doing this, but I'm questioning the boundaries, because when I look at this, I see the spot where you have it in there, where you have the compost pile for leaves, but this does not include the, the two settling ponds that are, that are part of the functioning of the water treatment plant. And the, the tree, what do I say, brush area where everybody dumps brush, which is also part of the, the whole game. So my only objection is, this doesn't include enough of the property. That's it, that's my only objection. Otherwise, I'm totally in favor of doing this.
Excellent. I, I, I hear you, Steve, and at first I didn't know where you were going, but you're right, especially the two sediment ponds, that's clearly part of the wastewater plant. Go ahead, Bart.
Oh, so I came on to this board in 2021, and this is when we, I think officially started talking about this. I would like to make a motion that we approve this. Finally put this one to bed.
Does that motion include Steve's correction on including the sediment pond?
And including Steve's addition.
I'll get back to Harry for a second.
A technical issue with that, property, property owners need to be noticed if property is going to be.
I make a motion that we move this to our next meeting.
Ms. Chair.
Yes?
I, there's a giant can of worms with that adjacent property. You really can't have dump piles within an area that's within shoreland.
Oh.
So there's kind of a huge issue if we start looking at this property and rezoning it to allow these uses that are, really should not be allowed within shoreland.
Art's still got the floor for a second.
This is, this is a huge can of worms that I, if we, if we include that adjacent property, I think as an applicant, I'm going to have to.
Copy. We're going to go to Steve.
Okay, if we're going down that path, then I got to go against what you, doing this, because what we have is a dump pond that you just described within this property that you're applying for. So I think what we should do is just table this and let the city come back with a better thought pattern.
Okay, Bart's got the floor, he was in the middle of a motion. Bart, what do you want to do?
So to clarify, I want to go with the original ordinance as written, that we approve the original ordinance as written.
That's your motion to approve the zoning map amendment. Got it, that's your motion. Who's got a second? Bart, reload it.
I'm not confused at the motion. I'm confused about the gravity of the motion, based on the intriguing factors that Mr. Davis just brought up. Like, I feel like there's a lot more to this story, and I don't feel like in good conscience I can vote based off of what I have in front of me.
Okay, I'm going to, Bart's got a motion. Is anyone going to make the second to that motion? Okay, so that motion, Sam has just had her say. What are the wishes of the group? Steve?
I, this is confusing, and the reason I didn't go along with Bart is because the statement that the planner just made with the dump pile with regards to the brush, and the fact that we're not putting in the settling ponds, and the fact that in this, we have a spot where we're, we're dumping leaves and we're dumping compost, I think this needs to go back and have further thought before we do anything. So what I'd like to do with this is simply, I mean, I'm not making a motion, but what I'd like to do is simply just say, table this until the city comes back with a plan and they get their eggs together.
Sam had her hand up.
I was.
So, to be cautious, we have, we have the city that has already made a, a particular and planned application that has already been thought out and planned accordingly. We also have an area that can't be included that has already been thought out. So it's not going to be something that's going to be included in the amendment.
Well, now I have a question.
Bet the floor.
So is what we're zoning the same, like, are we taking one plat of land and making it two separate zones? Is it like one business owner, is it like, or the city, for example? Is it, is it all platted the same? Is it all the same property?
No, Ms. Chair, so these, these are, these are two separate parcels.
Okay, I can get behind one parcel as long as it's not fully attached, or not leaked. You guys know what I'm trying to say. We're talking about two distinct parcels, I can get behind supporting.
Or missing, okay.
What I'm, what I'm having the issue with is we've just made, the city planner just made a statement that he didn't, opening up a can of worms because you have a dump site, we have two different dump sites. We have one for brush and one for composting. How many the difference? That's where I'm confused. What's, what's the difference in a, in a dump site?
I, I'll go to Bart in a second, but.
And both are a spot zone.
Once I heard that it was two separate parcels, that's the end of it for me. I'm fine with what's in front of us. Bart, go ahead.
We're, we're not, we're planning and zoning, we're not, we don't have, in that situation. So at this point, we're here to take care of the zoning rules, not that type of, that's not our treaty.
Okay, can I ask staff what the difference is on the can of worms with the compost site versus the brush site?
Ms. Chair, from what I understand, the dump site has been there for a while, but it's been there not with approval from the DNR in order to be there. So as far as I understand, that's an existing, non-conforming use that really shouldn't be there. It's not the intent of staff in order to take that use and to somehow make it through the public institutional zoning district, something that's allowed. So we are working internally in order to try to figure out, how is this something that we could get to the point where DNR is able to, but we're not there yet. We have not yet figured that out, and therefore we have left it out. So we have, we have thought about the requests, made it very clear what we want to change now in order to just make more sense for those properties.
So the compost site is approved by the DNR?
What I'm saying is no. I, I can't find any record that the DNR, either of the dump sites.
So then, in this zoning map that you're wanting to change, is the compost site?
As far as I know, no.
Well, you're saying that we're, I'm opening a can of worms if we approve this, because the compost site is not approved.
Maybe I'm confused as to where the dump site is.
Well, that's why I'm, I'm asking these questions.
So there's the leaf backing place, the true compost, that's the two sediment ponds, and beyond the sediment ponds, separate things. And it looks like this zoning map, based on my, it probably does pick up most of the compost outside. Probably all of it. So, but, okay, if we're done with that part of it, Sam's got the floor.
Well, we haven't gotten an answer.
Oh.
Is it approved or not approved?
Uh, Ms. Chair, I have answered this. As far as I know, the DNR hasn't approved any dump sites. Now, I did speak to the DNR specifically about these two rezonings, and they did state that there were no issues with them. So, assuming that the DNR has looked at it.
Uh, Ms. Chair, I make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment for 818 Northwest and 214 Northeast.
I'll second.
Second. Question on the motion? If that was a hand up or the glass is going on? Okay. Got a motion and a second, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those pose no?
No.
That passes 5-1? Done with that one on the ordinance. That's it for the public hearings. I just have a technical question, and I'll put it under a request to be heard more than anything else. The minute said that we had moved the Rice County access road thing to the next meeting, it's not on this agenda, do we need to take any action or anything because it wasn't on this agenda?
Ms. Chair, I was going to cover it under the general zoning updates.
Okay, all right.
So, long story short, we don't have anything new from Rice County, and I'm to the point where I feel like it's perhaps not in the public interest to continue it and to just re-notify to the point when we actually do have more things from Rice County, and that we do have an application fee and we can move forward on this. So I've taken it off the meeting with that idea in mind, and so there will be a new public notification for when Rice County does put everything together.
I should have checked with you first. Okay, that covers our bases, that, all right, we're good. Uh, okay, so no request to be heard. Items for discussion, we've got two of them, there's A and B. We'll get to the general planning in a bit, but Harry, you got a quick update on A.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. So I've, I've kind of talked about this in previous meetings just a little bit, hey, just make sure you're watching your attendance. We are starting to look at attendance, especially with new changes to the bylaws and some attendance requirements for those commissioners. So there are three requirements, or sort of three triggers when it comes to attendance. First, when a commissioner fails to attend one-sixth of the regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year without prior, without providing prior notice to the chair or city planner. Second is that a commissioner fails to attend one-third of the regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year with or without providing prior notice. Third is that any member consecutively missing one-fourth of the number of regularly scheduled meetings without prior notice. meetings without prior discussion agreement by the majority of the commission will be subject to review, in this case, Commissioner Delgado has triggered the agenda item in front of us, and it now goes in front of the whole planning commission, that their attendance does trigger at least one-third of the regularly scheduled meetings in a calendar year with or without providing prior notice, when you look at the number of scheduled meetings, so it's about twenty-three meetings for two thousand and twenty-four, assuming that Commissioner Delgado would, would go to, including today's meeting and the rest, that would be thirty-four point seven-eight percent, and of all, like, the one-third meetings held, not including today's meeting, that would be forty-two point eleven. So Commissioner Delgado does trigger that, so at that point, there's kind of a question in front of the planning commission, is there a recommendation by the planning commission to, it would be a recommendation to city council for remover, removal of Commissioner Delgado. That's not something that you have to make, it is just something that is triggered by this process. I think in speaking to Commissioner Delgado, it seemed like there, there was some, some things that he was going to weigh before making a decision one way or the other, I haven't heard from him recently about that, and I think with that, I might turn over to the chair, might have a little bit more.
Thank you, and Harry and I have talked about this on and off since my first meeting with Eric. I have talked to Eric a couple of different times, the last time I talked to him, he has my cell phone number, I can do. So Harry and I have struggled with it, and what I ask Harry is to present it exactly the way he did, without a recommendation, ultimately up to. That's what we're asking this group tonight, where you're at, I know where I'm at, heard from you guys.
Did anybody talk to him? Tried to talk to him directly, say, hit this mark and you go up and talk to him?
Yes, Ms. Chair, so I did reach out to Eric actually quite a few planning commissions ago, so that he knew that he was coming pretty close to one of his triggers, and confirmed that he was triggered, please, that last conversation. I think we actually probably would be talking about this a little bit sooner, it would probably come up in an earlier meeting. Kind of has been a thing that was sort of waiting to be brought in front of planning commission for a while. Today just happened.
Other discussions, comments? Do we need a motion, Harry?
Mr. Chair, I, I think the planning commission can run this how they will, I think for clarity to staff, who will end up putting a resolution together, perhaps to, to make a recommendation on the commission, that would be best, I just, you know, that, I'm, I'm worried about if there's any questioning of the decision about having some sort of motion.
Steve's got a question.
When does, when does his term expire?
Good question, I will pull that up.
Okay, so, yeah, in.
I don't mind making the motion as being a chair of other boards, having that seventh person to make differential decisions, or like today, we would have. Being outside of the board. On from. Schedule is just not allowing me to be here, so I'm, okay.
Now, you're, you're in the middle of a motion? Oh, okay.
You made a motion.
But please.
He hasn't made the motion yet.
I haven't made it yet.
Okay, so you're giving up.
I've given the floor to you, sir.
All right, and I'll make, I'll make the motion, and only on the principle of the fact that I'm guilty about that. Variance is a variance of variance. Self, self-determination, or whatever you want to call it, however you want to put it, create another variance of that.
So you've got the, Ed's got the motion to move this over to the city council, a second for that.
Okay, now he took it.
Okay, that's what we need, so, I've got the motion, I've got the second to move over to city council, I just want to echo again, I was a big fan, this is not anything personal, but if, if there was ever any fan sitting on my part, the three-three vote that we went for, and Bart, you mentioned, it is incredibly difficult to chair a group when it's, so that's, that's kind of where my motivation is. And it's not unprecedented, the guy that worked for the Twins, he did something up at the Twins.
He resigned, so.
And, yeah, and, so it was, it was, it was a very similar thing. Have you had a motion, I've got a second, vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those pose no? That carries. Yes.
You, I learned of this rule, forget Eric at the moment, I learned of this rule, whatever it was a month or two ago, when you brought it up, coming on to commission, there are a written document that you signed, I don't recall that, talking about the rules and regulations, in other words, it's a document saying X, Y, Z.
Actually, let, let me take it, Harry, I do, that, that's part of our annual meeting, you missed that part, so we do an annual meeting, go through our rules and regs, and we update any of our stuff, so that's where it would be, yeah, that's where it would be, and you just, you weren't here.
Fair enough.
Ms. Chair.
Harry, go ahead.
Yeah, it, yeah, Ms. Chair, and if anyone is looking for a copy of bylaws for the planning commission, I'm more than happy to provide them, you could get them as part of your welcome packet, and I do apologize if you didn't get them, didn't, Sam, okay, so, we can, we can send those out again just to make sure that people get them.
Okay.
Really crappy about that.
General planning update.
Ms. Chair, I gave my general update earlier.
Okay, so we got that one, and I, I should have checked with you on that one, so that's it for planning and zoning, board and commission updates.
Uh, Ms. Chair, I don't have anything from me unless anyone else has anything else from other boards.
Fine with that, so we're gonna consider that done, now to adjourn this meeting before we go into the work session, motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Mike's got the motion, who's got the second? Sam's got the second, all those.